January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Kirk, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fields, present. Commissioner Chin. Commissioner Ostrowski.
Present.
Commissioner Cray, here. Commissioner Kamkar, here. Vice Chair Sizer, here. Chair Buckbinder, present.
By way of introduction, my name is Adam Bookbinder. I am the Chair of the Planning Commissioner of the Planning Commission. This is also my first time officially chairing. So let's start with the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections? If none, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of, what's the date?
I think it was December thirteenth.
December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a second? Can I have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Fields.
Abstaining because I wasn't at that meeting.
Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Cray.
Hi.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Hi.
Vice Chair Sizer.
Hi.
Chair Buckbinder.
Hi. Director Eastwood, do you have any communications, agenda modifications, or postponements?
Lobby Eastwood, Communications Director, no communications, agenda modifications, or postponements. Thanks.
Okay. So this is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak? Is there anyone online? Okay, close that. Okay, so I believe now we move on to item one, which had the PDF here, but the tab went to sleep. So it's reloading. I actually, I have it here. PLN two thousand and twenty-two fifty-six. I believe Daniel Fama will be presenting.
Okay. Okay, so this is item one. This is a public hearing. Consider the request of W zero Campbell LP for property located at two twenty East Campbell Avenue in twenty-two South Second Street to allow establishment of a new restaurant, pedestrian-oriented activity with a full-service bar, liquor establishment, outdoor seating, and late-night activities, associated exterior building alterations and site improvements. The application under consideration is a conditional use permit with site and architectural review for property located at two twenty East Campbell and twenty-two South Second Street. The project site is located at the southeast corner of East Campbell Avenue and South Second Street. It is consisting of two parcels. The principal parcel is located at two twenty East Campbell. That was occupied by the former Rock Fizz and several other businesses, as well as a private parking lot. The secondary property is to the south at twenty-two South Second Street, formerly occupied by the former Pilates V studio. That also includes a small parking lot. Both properties are within the city's C three Center Business District zoning district and the corresponding Central Commercial General Plan land use district. Application before you has two components, the condition use permit and the same architectural review. The conditional use permit would allow establishment of a new restaurant, which is technically defined with the city's C three zoning district as a pedestrian-oriented activity with its full-service bar, which is defined as a liquor establishment, late night activities, which is defined as any activity that occurs prior to six AM or after eleven PM and outdoor seating on the private property. The restaurant would have a public closing time of ten PM with the staff closing time until midnight to allow for cleanup activity. That's what renders it a late-night activity. And in terms of seating, the plans indicate one hundred and eighteen indoor dining seats, twenty indoor bar seats, and twenty-two outdoor dining seats on the property's private property area. The sign architecture review component includes an exterior remodel of the two buildings, construction of a trash enclosure at the rear and related parking lot restriping, including the loss of one parking stall having to do with the relocation of an accessible parking stall. Here we have the site plan showing the larger building two twenty and then the secondary side two twenty, twenty-two South Second. This is showing the reconfigured parking lot that shows the loss of one parking stall. Currently, the accessible stalls located further over under current requirements, that stall does need to be closer to the sidewalk so that it provides a shorter path of travel to the restaurant's entrance at the corner. And the plans also show construction of a new trash enclosure that provides adequate space for composting, refuse, and recycling receptacles. Here we have the internal floor plan showing the configuration of the restaurant. The former Rocket Fizz component would be the principal area for dining and the bar area, as well as the pizzeria oven. And then the Pilates V side of the site would incorporate the back house, the kitchen, restroom, and storage facilities for the restaurant. In terms of review considerations, the land use aspect is primarily driven by the city's downtown alcohol beverage policy. This policy was adopted by the City Council in two thousand and nine, primarily intended to ensure that the provision of alcohol service is now only association with restaurants so that the city is no longer allows any standard bars without any food component. This is effectuated by various operational restrictions, such as a requirement that a full menu be available at all times, that any live entertainment is ancillary to the primary purpose of the restaurant so it doesn't become a nightclub. Limitation on the quantity of seating. So in this particular case, less than ten percent of the seating is actually proposed to be bar seating, which is under the twenty-five percent maximum. So as noted in the staff report, the application does fully comply with the policy's provisions. And those components of the policy are incorporated as conditions of approval. The city zoning code also requires the planning commission makes your findings. The most notable wish is that the proposal would not result in over-concentration of liquor establishments. The code does not define really what that means in terms of geographic area. More recently, the plant commission has looked at area plan boundaries or shopping center boundaries to define the area for a more consistent analysis. In that particular case, looking at the downtown development plan excluding the civic center, you can have approximately with this proposal, twenty-seven on sale licenses consisting of beer and wine licenses, general alcohol licenses associated with restaurants and two full bars. With the twenty-seventh, you would have a ratio approximately that of the prune yard of approximately one license per acre. And being that the city council found that the prune yard does not have an over-concentration at a similar ratio, staff does recommend that the planning commission find that there would not be an over-concentration in this case either. With regard to the exterior remodel of the building, the review considerations come both from the zoning district. The C three zoning district has its own design standards that are expert here and in your staff reports. They really speak to the type of design treatment that is expected in the downtown. And those standards very much implement the downtown Campbell Development Plan, which also speaks to ensuring that new design, new buildings and remodels are respectful of the pedestrian-oriented nature of the city's downtown. In regards to the proposal, have here the corner angle looking at the former Rocket Fizz site. You can see installation of new wood cladding, wood trim, tile stone accents, and a new window and foldable door system. Overall, the remodel really maintains the building's existing scale, massing form, and just provides more of a cosmetic contemporary upgrade to the building. In terms of the side of the building, on the top left, you have the rendering that's included in the project plans. On the top right, you have existing photograph. The proposal here effectively looks to visually combine these two buildings. As noted in the staff report, this is technically two properties in two separate buildings, and that will remain the case, but visually they will look the same. And there will be a recorded covenant that will allow penetrations between the two buildings by effectively requiring the two properties, if they were ever to be sold, to be sold together so that the two buildings can be treated as one building under the building code. Now, with regard to consistency with the design standards and the downtown development plan, staff did highlight the SARC that a removal of the Pilates V storefronts and installation of the wood cladding would remove transparent glazing into that space, which would generally be seen as inconsistent. In response, SARC did recommend that the applicant look at installing a mural instead of the wood cladding. And that can did provide an additional zip that's included in your packet and shown on the bottom that shows then the area where the mural would be installed. Basically, you would have the Wayne's Code that's proposed extend all the way across the building with the mural installation on top. That mural installation has been included as a condition of approval with a review by the Civic Improvement Commission for a non-binding recommendation to the applicant in terms of the mural design. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the client commission adopt the resolution approving a condition use permit with site and architectural review. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions for staff? Let's go from this side.
I'm trying to just find it here in my and I can't, but there was something in the staff report. The so the outdoor dining, the tables are obviously right beyond Campbell with the white sidewalk, but what did the staff say something about the outdoor?
So the plans, yeah, the plans do show die outdoor dining seats on the private property. So there's actually a component of the sidewalk that's on private property. So the staff report notes that at this point, staff would not be supportive of seating on the public sidewalk due to the tight constraints. You have a new corner ramp that would be installed soon. You also have a tree and so it gets very tight in that area and.
That's probably not an issue though, because I imagine they're putting down their private, the seating on their private.
Correct.
So they. Like some of the other restaurants.
And they will also be able to value themselves of a park with permit as well.
And then the other question I had, Daniel, I doesn't, so when we talk about the number of liquor licenses downtown, I know, I know that's probably more of an issue of of the makeup of downtown between restaurants and retail office, et cetera. Because obviously, this is a restaurant, a full-service restaurant. It's not a bar and a restaurant needs, you know, liquor. But but so we talk about the ratio of one alcohol license to one point one acres because that's what Prune Yard has. And that maybe the city council has to look at that. But I so I guess my only, so I'm leading to the question of, so the the ratio of one liquor license to one per one point one acre, that that's pretty subjective and arbitrary itself, I guess, right? It just happens to be that that's what the prune yard has.
Correct. I mean, as done in the staff report, and there is largely, there will be a need fairly soon to reevaluate this question from a policy perspective. I mean, this finding goes back a very long time. Well, before the downtown was saturated with restaurants.
Right, right, okay. All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a question of ownership of the two sites, they're both owned by the same entity, correct?
No, they have similar but distinct ownerships.
Similar but distinct. So how effective is that recorded? I guess, condition that they have to be sold together. I don't think we can force one, one party to sell a property if they don't want to sell it. Or is this a question for the attorney?
Well, since both properties are subject to the application, we can condition both properties on entering into this covenant.
But but not necessarily force them to go through with it if.
Well, they'd have to give up the use if if they didn't sell them together.
Okay. Okay, so that was one question. The other question I wanted to ask is regarding, the kitchen is always open when the bars open, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's the, it's not like some other places where kitchen closes early and the bar stays open.
Correct, we explicitly prohibit that.
Okay, excellent. Okay, then, so far so good. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we, just to be clear on the, because we did talk about this, SARC, about the outdoor seating. So we are saying that they can have outdoor seating on the Campbell Avenue side. It just has to be constrained a certain distance from the front of to the property edge so that there's significant, so that there's sidewalk sufficient sidewalk space as there is with down the street as well. So so we're not saying they can't have any.
Correct, it just needs to stay on the the private sidewalk area.
Okay. All right, and I think that's all I have for now.
Oh, thanks. I had a question about the proposals for the murals. Is one of those murals that's towards the end of the packet, the proposal? Or are those just examples?
These are concept examples. The condition would require them to provide a more specific example or examples to the Civic Improvement Commission. But being that it's artwork, this is really a free speech issue. So they do have wide latitude to create a mural to their preference without much city input. Obviously, there are some limitations to that if they were obscene or something that was overtly a sign. But other than that, they would be able to paint what they believe is appropriate.
Okay, but it sounds like it is going to move forward in collaboration with the Civic Improvement Commission in some way?
Correct, for a non-binding recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan, thanks.
Yeah, that's effectively what the city did with the Opus Building and their sign up top.
Yeah, that's definitely the right entity to work with.
Can I clarify something on that? I just so you understand. In the SARC, it came up about the issue of of something has to be done with that side of the building since they can't put a a window in and see the kitchen and all that kind of stuff. They explained very clearly that that was a limitation. And so they had originally had this thing with plants growing on it. And it was recommended as an idea that in lieu of that, to put a mural up. That was, it was, it was a recommendation from us that we could do that. It was not a stipulation. We were just recommending that as an alternative. So the plan, as I told them, I said, it's just one man's opinion. Her two men's opinion at SARC is part of planning commission, but but it's, it's it's still an open question as whether or not we feel like that's a good idea because there's five other members, right? So just wanted to clarify that that is not engraved in stone. They've redone their design to put that in as an alternative consideration.
Correct, and if the majority of the commission doesn't like the mural idea, that can be stricken by simply removing the condition of approval that specifies that.
I only have a question about the alcohol policy as it related to sort of, you know, number of bars in certain location. I think if we do, I'm not sure if we're going to get into it today, but in future councils, to look at service calls, noise complaints, sort of like the downstream of alcohol when we're talking about this, because it sort of feels like we're looking at a solution, which is just like arbitrarily limit the number of bars, but I think kind of like Commissioner Cray was getting at. It's one thing to like get a glass of wine with dinner and then very different than like a full-service bar in terms of approving them. So I think if we dug more into that, I'd like to be looking at that. But I don't know how much we're going to do that today.
Yeah, I mean, and just for broader context, I mean, I've been with the city for a long time. This is actually going to be my sixteenth year. So I've seen the evolution of the downtown from a very sleepy place to what it is now. A lot of what the policy was trying to address was that a lot of the earlier restaurants and bars tend to stay open late. And then it's really the late-night activity association with the alcohol that's causing all the problems. The policy does have that midnight closing, and even that's a bit late in comparison to a lot of restaurants. I mean, this is a ten PM restaurant. In past applications that did try to get past midnight, we very much did do a deep dive into calls for service. And as you can imagine, a lot of the calls for service do in fact happen after midnight, one and two AM. And that's really where that that pain point is for a police department. So that that there is certainly a relationship there between hours and alcohol. I will in the future have to deal with more.
Thank you.
Thank you. One question, I don't think this matters, but I just wanted to make sure on page, on the page fifty-four of the packet, says that the staff hours end at noon. It says twelve PM instead of twelve AM. The staff's notes say the correct thing. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything accidentally binding improperly there.
Yeah, but the conditions are provable.
Okay, thank you. As Commissioner Fields alluded to, I, I'm not sure this is a question you can answer, but to what extent are restaurants that also serve alcohol bar-like in practice?
Well, not, I mean, generally, that's what we're looking to prevent. But often, that is in fact the case. ABC, the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, clearly has some staffing limitations. They are a statewide agency. There are many restaurants that operate throughout the state that clearly operate as bars. You see that in how they're laid out. Some, there's a place in downtown San Jose that I like to frequent, Paper Plane. It looks like a bar, it feels like a bar. It's licensed as a restaurant. And because of that, the city had to take action back in two thousand and nine with its policy to create more specific standards so that you didn't have that evolution of a restaurant to a bar in the later hours.
Okay, so the downtown alcohol policy is sort of, the justification for that is that it builds on the existing, I think it's type forty-seven regulations from the state because those allow restaurants to, in some cases, operate in a more bar-like capacity. But in practice, our regulations don't really allow for that given the requirement that food is served all the time, that only a particular percentage of floor space can be allocated bar space and so on.
Correct.
Okay. I think that answers my questions. If anybody has any other questions for staff, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Hi, everybody.
Hello, please introduce yourself.
My name is Oswaldo Messia. I'm the architect for the project and designer. We have the owners of the restaurant and the owners of the property, as well as a lawyer here as well. Please mind to introduce ourselves. We're very happy to come to Campbell. This will be the fourth location for W zero. It's a growing restaurant. We look forward to bring Southern Italian food with handmade pasta on site and, you know, specific cocktails, you know, that are made to as an ancillary to the, to the restaurant, to the food and all of that. I'm not sure if I can, I'm a, can connect my, my screen to the.
Log into the Zoom meeting?
I think I'm, I'm looking at this.
If there's a timer, just to make sure you pause it while we're working this out.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, we were just going to show, I mean, more of what everybody has seen already. So but I think like from what, how the meeting is going, I think like you guys don't have any questions for us or anything, it's more.
Yeah, let's go from this side. Same, do you have any questions for the applicant?
One one question was, and I'm not sure how final what was shown, but like, I love that we're keeping the mid-century arch, that's beautiful. I think in general, acronyms are confusing. No one knows what they are. And at your other locations, it says DOPIO zero, big clear sign. And like the sort of center of this thing is a DZ and I.
It's something that it was an early design. Actually, we're not, we're stepping away from the DC logo and we're just doing the full.
Oh, great.
The full name on it. It's already showing, it's just looked too small probably on the rendering, but we're getting rid of the acronym and just going with the full name.
Okay, that was one question. And I guess the second question, you know, just sort of continuing about the mural. How did you all feel about the mural? Is this something that?
We all love it.
Okay.
We're all for it, yeah.
Great.
We actually do murals in our restaurants, normally inside.
Yep.
But yeah, we'll be, we'll be happy to bring outside and work with the city and, you know, any commission that we need to work with to try to develop a a mural that is beneficial for everybody. You know, murals are very popular right now. It's a, it's a very good, we believe it's a, they sometimes can even become landmarks. You know, like we saw, we see a lot of, even from our own restaurants, right? We see a lot of interaction on social media, which it brings people into, you know, traffic. You know, it creates a passive and active interaction of people that comes, they picture and stuff, and then post it on social media. You know, and, you know, and voluntarily, they create some sort of a free publicity for. You know, and, you know, and voluntarily they create some sort of a free publicity for everybody for the downtown, for the restaurant. And that's something we're, we're looking forward to it for, you know, the developing of downtown Campbell.
Great. And I guess my only other question out of curiosity is like, if approved timelines, because Racket Fizz has been closed already. Couple of years, like really prominent locations that have been shut.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
The, so we have, the, the, the plans are, are all done. We're ready submitted to we were trying to work on parallel with building department, you know, especially on the demolition interior permit. And we were just pending this to see what was going to be the outcome of the exterior of the so knowing from today, the sets, the setup for the exterior is probably at ninety percent. So, you know, fairly quickly, we should be able to submit plans for all the exterior and the facade and everything. You know, work whichever way we need to work to develop the mural. Yeah, it's like fast tracking it as much as we can.
Great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that you're open to the mural. I guess I just have a comment, which is that, you know, if you could kind of work with the Civic Improvement Department, and I'm sure they already have relationships with various artists because they've been kind of commissioning different art in the city and so forth. That would be pretty neat to have somebody local work on the mural.
We're open to it. Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
Yes. I, I have a little different take on the mural thing. First of all, can, can we? I, I realize you stated that, we stated that we, we don't have, it's uncondi, it's, it's unconditional approval of the, from the CIC that they don't have whatever you called it. I can't remember what you called it.
Just a non-binding.
Non-binding. So could we ask for, as a condition to have a, have the city approve the mural? And would, or would that put us into a difficult position?
If it's up to up, we, if it's up to us, we're, we're okay to go through some sort of approval.
So if they were okay with that and then, and then we, you know, I, I, I have a little a little bit of experience with this because I, I was in charge of the of the utility box program for four years. And then I also helped with the mural on, on the side of our beach. It's the, one of the only other two murals that are in downtown. So I, I, first of all, I'd, I'd like to make sure we commission a real expert muralist, whether that's local or not. To me, it's more important if it's high quality on something like this because it can be very, very visible. So that was, that's just my personal opinion about it. And, and secondly, I, I, I you know, I, I would, if I had my choice, I would rather it be conditional that that there is, is an approval, whether it's CIC or whether it's actually the city council. So that would be my take on that. Otherwise, I'm a big I'm, I'm in big favor of the, of the idea of a mural as, as the solution for that side of the that side of the building. So I'm, I'm all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was going to talk about two items. No, I want to talk about three items. To be honest with you, I have a different take on it, you know, I don't feel we need to micromanage that, you know, I think we've got to leave it up to the private sector, whatever works for you. You know, so I, you know, if we were going to take a vote as to, should we make this a city council or CIC mandatory approval? My vote would be no, you know, I think we need to let the private sector do their magic. As far as my other two questions that I asked the staff, I want to ask, you know, the panel. The kitchen would be open when the bars open with full menu, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And full menu, we're talking, you know, like seventh course.
Everything on the menu.
And then the second question was regarding the regarding understanding of this condition about selling. And I completely understand why it's there. It's needs to be there. If I were the proprietor trying to rent this place, I would want that in, you know, but I just want to see nods, you know, of the property owners that they understand what this condition is.
They, yeah, we, they are aware. We all know. They have all responded that they are agreeable.
I mean, this is a, this is a time to come and respond.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Len Rivkind, and I'm a real estate attorney and I represent the property owners. And so thank you for
Both property owners?
Both property owners, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a family. There's different, one trust owns one building and another trust owns the other building. It's the same family. Okay. And in any event, regarding the deed restriction that you're concerned about. Absolutely. Well, first of all, the condition of approval is for my office to draft it up for your city attorney's review and comment. And so you'll have your own legal counsel review and approve it before. And it's a condition of approval. No building permit can be issued until the city attorney approves the deed restriction. So I think you'll be protected that way. And let me just tell you the genesis of how this all came about. Basically, this is a very creative and I applaud staff's creativity to work with us on this. Because it's two separate buildings, two separate parcels, one business using these two buildings, there's, there's fire code issues and all, and all the like. And so we've worked through that. And the idea here is that while Dope Zero is the tenant occupying both buildings, we're not going to change anything. The buildings will stay under the with the same ownerships and the same thing. And you'll notice your condition number six, conditions of approval says that. I actually have one minor request for a change of one word in that. So that's the cue to return to condition of approval number six. It's pretty deep in your packet. It's not page number, but it's
It's a packet page twenty seven.
Thank you. So on condition of approval and so Commissioner Kamkar, condition number six probably answers most of your questions about how the deed restriction will work. And my request for staff to consider is not about putting the condition, the deed restriction on, but when it's time for it to come off, because all things in life change. Maybe a generation from now or something, there'll be some other use of this building, but I'm hopeful for the landlord and the restaurant's sake that this is at least a generation of use here. Okay, that we hope that they get that there. Okay, so we hope that the generation is twenty five years. I hope you get a twenty five year run. I ask for staff where it says in the one, two, three, third paragraph of paragraph of condition number six, it basically says that that it identifies what conditions of when the restriction can come off, meaning like one is that the same business no longer occupies the property or the conditional use permit is rescinded for whatever reason. Or, or the two buildings are combined into one building lawfully. Then those would be the conditions, but it says in there, the city and therefore may be terminated. And I, I think it should say shall be terminated if those conditions are met. I, I don't think that's a discretionary thing because this is a restriction that no property owner really wants in their property, but we're agreeing to it as an express condition of approval for this project that in fact that, so I, I just request that the commission consider changing that word from May to shall and, and certainly your staff can consider whether that they, they would support that. The other things is there's been a lot of questions about the mural. And again, this is very creative and we appreciate both. Is it your SARC commission? We think it's a great creative response and I can assure you that the both the landlord and the respective, the tenant, well, is the tenant, there's at least, you know, but once this restaurant is open, we want the highest class, most beautiful mural that is tasteful and appropriate for the town. No, you're not going to get anything obscene. No, you're not getting a political statement. No, we're, it's going to be something that everybody can support because this is a family restaurant. We want families to be comfortable to come there and perhaps take their picture in front of the mural before they go into the restaurant to eat. And so there will be absolute openness to working with your SARC commission, openness to considering a local artist, if that's what we would like. But we can't really support that, that in fact that there is a a condition of approval where we have to get approval for that. I think that kind of borders on First Amendment issues, at least that's my view. You know, you can, you, you can regulate by time, place and manner. You don't have the right, like Oliver Wendell Holmes said, you know, you can't cry fire in a in a crowded theater. But, you know, so you, so we did something that Justice Potter Stewart determined is obscene. That's another US Supreme Court reference. We won't do that. We assure you. It's going to be something your Orchard City is going to appreciate and hopefully consider a landmark. And very happy with it. And I think, I think that's really it for what you have going.
Thank you very much for answering my question.
So thank you. I don't give the attorney the mic. I'm going to sit down now.
Commissioner.
Just a couple of quickies are just, did you say there's a couple of other restaurants that this ownership group already has?
For Dope Zero?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is three other.
Three others. Okay. And where, where does, what does the name come from? What's the derivation?
It's related to the flower. It's a double zero flower.
Oh, okay.
Used for the pasta.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Italian word for it.
Thanks, just curious.
Where are the three restaurants?
San Francisco, Concord and Mountain View.
The only question I had was I noticed that the, it has a later closing time than most restaurants do. What's the reason for that?
The closing time is ten, but then, you know, they stay open, well, the, the back of the kitchen or the the employees still working until almost around midnight. Cleaning up and getting ready for the next shift in the morning.
But, but why the ten PM? Yes.
That's
Please come up to the mic.
Hi, my name is John Akil. I'm a co-owner of Dope Zero. Our hours are normally eleven thirty to ten PM. Weekend, all the way to eleven, summer, summertime. That's, that's what, so twelve o'clock is including everybody cleaning up and out, but service stops eleven.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else in the public want to speak?
Yes, I, yes, just want to make sure that we understand the concern that you have in a bar. I just want to tell you that a bar sells an average on our restaurants, the hard liquor is only twelve percent. Overall, twenty percent with wine, up to thirty with, with table service. So we, we more, we are bigger on food. As a matter of fact, we have one of the best pizza you can ever own. The number fifteen in the USA, we number, we top one hundred in the, in the world. So we are bringing quality. We, it's a family restaurant. And we understand that, you know, we, we're not staying late. We don't have that, that, that kind of crowded that you're concerned about. Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
So just, we're, we're clear on the hours. I'm not sure what, because, because, you know, it says ten o'clock and then twelve. And now he's, he mentioned staying open to eleven. So if you don't, if we don't get eleven in, in the approval, you're not going to do, you're not going to be able to serve till eleven. Okay, so this is my understanding. So we, we need to, I think, make a decision here on what the, what the right hours are.
Yes, so the rigid materials that were submitted and as noted in the conditions of approval do require a ten PM closing time. Now, the downtown alcohol policy recommends a closing time no later than midnight. So there is certainly purview for the commission to extend that to eleven PM, the applicant, so to request at this moment.
So just to be clear, i- if, if you really, in the summer hours are going to serve until eleven, we, we need to make that
Sure.
as part of the approval.
So again, during the week, we close at ten PM, weekend, eleven PM. We won't stay later than eleven PM because otherwise we have several people working. That's eleven PM. They'll be okay with us on weekend.
So that does sound like a request for a change then. Okay, yeah, just to, just to be clear, the, the current conditions of approval say close at ten PM every night.
Okay.
So we're good. Work that out.
Fine with us.
So, but it sounds like they're asking for eleven. So we talked about updating it to eleven for summer weekend hours.
Yeah, just to be clear on that. Okay, thank you. Were there any other members of the public who wanted to speak? Anybody down line? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open discussion.
Just a couple of notes. So the First Amendment ramifications of their attorney noted that, that is why the language is for a non-binding recommendation, just to reflect that. And then in regards to the request for May to be replaced with the word shall, staff has no objections. The commission would like to read that into the record upon a motion.
Thank you. Do you start discussion? Okay.
Thanks. Yeah. So thanks for all that detail and some of the background on the property owners and the restaurant itself. The, the restaurant seems to have a very good reputation with a high number of almost five-star reviews. So congratulations on that. Looks like amazing food. I think this is going to be a huge asset to the Campbell, to our community, to the families that live here and live nearby. So thank you for applying to have a restaurant here. I think that sounds like, you know, from what we heard and the reputation and, and the brand and the business that the, this group has already developed. I, I'm supportive of the mural. I don't think we need a condition of review or approval for the mural. I'm sure they're going to come up with something that's going to be in line with their brand and the high quality based on the, the reviews and things that I'm, I'm seeing. So there's that great precedence precedent. So I'm not concerned about any issues that may come towards to the town and the other thing was regarding the late, later hours. I think eleven PM sounds like a great idea if that's already something that's happening in other cities. It's nice to have a little bit of a wider range of times that you can go out. Ten is a little bit limiting in our very busy lives today. And I think it's not as late as what Daniel talked about in terms of the police activity kind of happening more towards the post midnight hour. So I'm supportive of making that change and allowing that flexibility and enabling the community to have more opportunity to enjoy the restaurant.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
One, very glad, like I mentioned before, Rocket Fizz is getting something filled in that's been an empty location for a while. I've seen Mountain View struggle with like a lot of empty downtown spaces and he's sort of I think get in effect pretty quick where if you have a few more and more start and Campbell's really managed to have a really robust downtown and that's, you know, been really empty with all that glass. So really excited to see something coming there. In terms of the mural, I think something, the same playbook that we did for the mural behind OPA, I think it was non-binding similar. The artist was Leila Jamellos. So I don't know how the process works here, but I thought she did an incredible job. She came in with like four different recommendations that love Campbell. She did it in a couple of days and she does them all over the Bay area. I follow her on Instagram now. So if you're looking for somebody, I think she did a really great job on the mural. And I do think involving the Civic Improvement Commission is valuable. If the commission has a clear role, it really is this. It's meant to be about civic beautification. So like I'm open to how they are involved, but I think involving them in some way is a nice use of the council. I love that they're keeping the mid-century modern arch. And yeah, generally excited and supportive of the location. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zissar?
Yes, I echo, I echo the other commissioners' enthusiasm about this. I I I I walk downtown almost every day and I don't live very far from there. And I see the empty that empty spot. I'm I'm not a big fan of that mid-century look, but you you your design has maximized uh the, you know, the positive aspects, uh, modernizing and making it look like it fits well. So I I I really appreciate what you've done. Um, I'm I'm a big mural fan and I I I'm I'm not, you know, gonna push back on the mural thing. Um, uh, I'll I'll trust that we'll get some good designs to that uh that they can uh find a a a great muralist to do something that everybody's gonna be proud of. Um, especially you since you're gonna be it's it's your business and I'm sure you're gonna want uh something really good. So um I'm excited about about uh about having uh that space filled. Um, I did I did look at your menus, so uh at your other places, so it looks pretty good. Um, and um I I think uh I I look forward to uh this coming to fruition and uh we'll support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kamkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also share my colleagues' enthusiasm. Can't wait till you guys get started and um uh, you know, get ready for your operation and, you know, come and support you. Thank you.
And I just I go whatever it is, I think it's a plus, really a good plus for uh for Campbell, for downtown Campbell. I like the way they worked with the two buildings. That's that's awesome. I'm okay with eleven P M weekend hours. I think that's fine. I don't know if we're get to put that in there. And I also do note that, you know, on the mural, we we do have a condition that they do come before the Civic Improvement Commission for non-binding recommendation. I can't imagine that there will be, you know, big problems there. So I think that that's fine. And uh, yeah, just just a plus. So I I think it's a good project.
Thank you. Um, I'm, uh, as I said, it's SARC, I'm keen on a mural. I like the idea then. Over the uh break, I visited Marion, Illinois. It's a pretty desolate place, but they have a lot of public art there and it really it was really beautiful. And I thought, why can't we have that here? Uh, I agree with Commissioner Kamkar. Uh, we don't want to micromanage things. Uh, as Commissioner Zissler said, the proprietor presumably wants to make something appealing because that's part of their business. I I don't think we need to worry about that. Uh, I'm also okay with the option to close to eleven P M rather than ten. Um, I'd encourage the applicant to uh expand, add parklets if the demand is there at a later time. And I'd like to thank staff for making the two buildings set up work. Um, there are no other comments. Does anyone want to make a motion?
One note, if the commission is accepting of the eleven P M uh closing time, um, you may also wish to consider to modify condition of approval nine N as a Nancy regarding outdoor seating. It's outdoor seating currently is indicated to end at ten P M, but that can be extended to eleven P M as well under the downtown alcohol policy.
Thank you, good catch.
So I make a motion that the Planning Commission, uh, the city of Campbell granting approval of conditional use permit with site and architectural review to allow establishment of a new restaurant with full service bar, outdoor seating, and late night activities. Exterior building alterations, including installation of wood cladding, wood tile, stone accents, a new window, foldable door system and removal removal of the former Pilates V building, storefront and barrel tile roofing and construction of a new trash enclosure and related parking lots with striping for property located two twenty East Campbell Avenue and twenty two South Second Street with all the conditions except we will uh change condition nine N to uh have the uh hours eleven P M serving customers on the weekends, which I think is what they asked for. And also the uh changing the word uh uh may to shall and then condition number six.
Uh, I would also, I think, also nine E, the actual business hours.
Yeah, okay. And then and then what was it ninety?
Yes.
I said nine N. I can.
It's bold. Nine N is the outdoor seating hours, nine E is the hours of operation.
Okay, and ninety as well, changing those to eleven P M on the weekends, so.
And to clarify, your motion by weekend, you mean Friday and Saturday?
Friday, Saturday, I'm sorry, yeah. Which I assume is what what they yeah, Friday and Saturday. And I think that's it.
Is that uh motion clear?
Yes.
I'll second.
Can we have a voice vote or please call the board?
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Strosky?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Aye.
Pastor Sizer?
Aye.
Chair Buckbinder?
Aye. Um, that uh that motion passes. This action is uh final unless appealed to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Uh, congratulations.
We'll be very happy.
See you soon.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next thing we have on the agenda is the report of the Multi-Family Development and Design Standards Subcommittee. Uh, that's Commissioner Kamkar and myself. Guys? No worries. Uh, the report of the Multi-Family Development Design Standards Subcommittee, that's Commissioner Kamkar and myself. Uh, I believe we don't have anything to report now, but we will be attending um session, more sessions with developers and reviewing um the standards as they come in. I believe we have our next meeting on Friday.
This this Friday, we have our next meeting.
Okay, so we will likely have something to report next time. And uh next, the report of the Community Development Director.
Sure, a few quick things happen here. Uh, since this is concerning downtown, um, just wanted to update you on the parklet program. So as you might have observed, the temporary parklets are still out there. Uh, last year, uh, the council did approve a semi-permanent parklet program. Uh, it entails uh pre-designed templates that are designed by an architect working under contract with the city. Uh, we have opened as of yesterday the ability for restaurants to come and apply for a semi-permanent parklet using one of those designs as a roof or no roof. Uh, the council also authorized up to thirty thousand dollars in grants uh for restaurants uh to use to support development of the parklets. Uh, the application periods open this month. Uh, the overall schedule is to have them in review, approved, uh, issue permits, and will transition from temporary to permanent uh by the end of March. So that'll be the transition going forward.
What's a parkland?
What's a parklet? Uh, parklet is the space in front of the restaurants downtown, a parking space that's used for outdoor seating.
Okay, so there's going to be a restaurant in the parking area.
It's just seating. It's it's what's there now. You know, with the Jersey barriers and stuff.
So seating utilized by the the restaurant um that's behind the parking space. So so if you're downtown now, I think we have at least ten, ten to twelve restaurants uh that are using those spaces. Uh, when COVID hit, I I wasn't here, but um the uh the city went ahead and put out the K rails that you see. Uh, the city has been funding those for the last two years. Uh, they've been able to build the temporary parklet to utilize those spaces. Sometime now, there's been a question, what's next? And the the next is, uh, given the success of those in the sports downtown and crave more of outdoor uh Parisian experience with outdoor dining, uh, council's been supportive of a transition to a semi-permanent parklet program. And the higher priorities is to make it look nice. Uh, so we did hire an architect to have pre-approved designs um that are available. Happy to push out the link to our website, so um so you can come and apply. Uh, the architect will prepare the construction plans and uh they would just have to hire the contractor to go ahead and build those.
So when you say transition from temporary department to semi-permanent is happening in March, does that mean that the existing parklets are all going to be replaced by then or?
Yes, yes. So uh, two options. If you've uh a restaurant been a yourself for temporary pro temporary parklet, no intention to go forward, uh, your temporary parklet would be removed and the program would end for you. If you wanted to go forward into the semi-permanent parklet program, uh, the intent is when the K rails are removed, you could start construction on your semi-permanent parklet.
That's exciting. It'll be a kind of a uniform look for downtown.
That is true.
So all those, well, I I don't know what you call them, barriers. All those barriers are gonna go away at some point.
That is correct.
Correct.
But aren't there gonna be some sort of barriers or not?
There is, yeah. One of the uh high priorities uh council advocated was safety. Last thing we wanted was an SUV or a truck to to inadvertently um not impact our diners. So they they have been designed uh to simulate uh the safety of a K rail without looking like a K rail.
Yeah, that's great.
Uh, that was that was report number one. Uh, point number two, happy to report over the Christmas break pursuant to direction from the Commission Council, we revised our housing elements. Uh, as a Christmas present, we sent it back to H T D on December twenty sixth. Uh, per state law, they have sixty days to review and provide us comments. Uh, that'll be approximately in the February. Uh, what that means is we're hopefully generally on the home stretch here. Uh, our broad intent is by March, and I hope you don't have any vacation plans, to bring to the Plan Commission Council and likely a special meeting, general plan, housing element, E I R certification, objective standards, and a comprehensive zoning update. So a lot of reading ahead, a lot of you, of course, have been prepared in reading the reports, but uh we are entering the last stage uh with the H T D comments. And as um Chair Buckbinder reported, we'll have objective standard updates uh that will come soon. But I'll be feeding into a March adoption date for that. Uh, and last but not least, as I did, as Chair Buckbinder mentioned, uh, we do anticipate going out for stakeholder outreach with our multi-family development standards later this month. And that will come back to the commission about a month from now uh for you to review and provide comments on. And that's the report I have for things.
Thank you very much. And with that, uh, return to our next meeting of January twenty fourth. Thank you, everyone.